It's 2:05 Tuesday, May 8, 2018. This is a work session of Marquette Township Board. We do have a few members missing. Dan and Randy are excused today. They're actually probably out of the city. And Ernie is on his way, so he can catch up when he gets here. This is, we have public comment first. If you, anybody wants to say anything before we get started, you guys? Or are you good? Okay. We're going to be discussing DWRF II water project. We have discussed this before, and I thought I actually remembered, and I asked Clerk Rotary if we had actually made a motion last year in the fall or sometime to not discuss this and put it off for a few years. I seem to remember that, and he said, "I remember that too." So he went back and looked at all the motions, and there was much discussion. And when that came up, it was discovered that we did not have till 2025 to make a real decision. We had till '28. But we never made a motion to actually, like, not pursue this. So that was the first thing I wanted him to check. So the second part of it is, we did not have a lot of financial information to make a credible decision on if we did want to go forward or not, or even talk about it. So Manager Gerard put a bunch of stuff together, and you should have that packet. It's from a January meeting, I think. No, this is more backup. Yeah, this is March. I grabbed our system improvement plan, too, from January. I didn't know if we'd need that. Yeah, this is Phase Two consideration from March 30th of this year, and he gave us some maps and everything. So this is kind of what I was thinking we'd focus on, even though we kind of talked about it before. But as you know, it's a lot easier to discuss these kinds of projects and thought processes if you have a work session. So that's why we're here, just wanted to give a little backup. Randy, do you want to talk about the memo you gave us in the backup? Do you want to just do kind of an overall for anybody who's listening to this?
Kind of a lengthy overall, but...
Well, just, yeah, because we've got new maps and everything now. The financial part of it is a little bit more locked down. You did an update, and you've got the 1982 water supply contract in here.
Actually, the 59-cent-a-thousand discount is good through December 31st of 2026.
Twenty-six, no.
Well, that's what it is in the contract.
Yes. But what made it to change to 28? Was it the fact that we're not, Kirk had said, "We're not using as much water"?
No, it didn't change to 28. It's still 26. December 31st of 2026 is the court-established termination date for the 59-cent-per-thousand-gallon discount unless...
Less, yes.
...we satisfy a use criteria before that date.
Okay.
So the court damage award to the township was a cash payment of $195,000, which the city paid. And the balance of the award, $560,000 additional, was to be made by a 59-cent-per-thousand-gallon discount under the contract terms through December 31st of 2026 unless we utilized enough water to value 560,000 prior to that date.
Thanks for that.
So that's where the variation comes in. Well, you know, where Kirk and I have been talking with the board is, we just need the board to make a decision. Because starting in 2004, when this issue first started up, the board adopted in about mid-2005, they adopted the water supply project, which had two phases to it. First phase was the project that's been completed, and that was to be followed by a second phase, which is the Morgan Meadows, referred to as the Morgan Meadows Project, which caused us to acquire the property and to do the test wells on the 40 acres that we have at Morgan Meadows. The Phase Two has been part of the strategic plan, the direction to the staff ever since, either implicitly or expressly in strategic plans that have been adopted and has never been changed by the board. We've asked the board numerous times, "What is your intention? Do you want us to go forward on this, or do you want to shelf it?"" And it's always been, "Go forward." So we've been expending a tremendous amount of time, tremendous amount of money, keeping that plan updated and ready to go. The discussion that you're referring to, that you've asked Clerk Rotary about, was at about the same time we were dealing with the effects of the recession and the effects of the dark stores. In terms of assessing it, I believe it was actually during the 2018 budget process, when we were having that discussion in work sessions...
Mm-hmm, in the fall.
...about what were we going to do because of the decreased revenues. If we were at 2014 level of revenue in 2018, the question then was, can the township afford to even consider going forward with the Phase Two of the water project? And that's when the discussion began about, "Well, let's defer this for about five years and see what our financial picture looks like after the Supreme Court rules on some other cases that were pending," which is now probably going to occur late this year, not be decided until early next year on the Esquinaba case. But that was the discussion. I don't believe there was ever a motion to that effect. I think it was during a work session in the board, by consensus, that, "All right, let's put this off for about five years." Shortly thereafter, the discussion came up again, and I can't remember what the format it was. It was something, it was before the board, that the water project became part of that discussion. And as a result of that, there was a request, I believe by Trustee Wiegand, I believe it was, about, "Let's get some financial information. Let's get some background. Let's get some projections from staff about if we went forward with this project, what might it look like and what might it do to us going forward cost-wise, benefit-wise, service-wise, everything else?" And that caused me to put together the document that you referenced as of March 30th, which you discussed, or at least considered, began to consider at your first meeting in April. And then it was put off to this work session. So what I, what Kirk and I did is, we went back and we identified the route, obviously verified the route, got in touch with our engineers and designers that had been working on this since 2005, and had them give us a ballpark update, estimated cost of what they thought it would be right now based upon current labor, excuse me, current labor costs and current material costs. We blended that in to give you a rough idea, basically just an estimate at this point of what the cost of the project would be going forward, recognizing that now there are no other subsidies or federal funds that we could qualify for. I don't know if you remember or not, but in 2009, we had stimulus funds that were awarded $2.2 million towards the project that would reduce the cost at that time to just over $3 million, right around $3 million, that the board rejected. So that was the last bonus, I guess you'd have to say, that was available, and we don't anticipate there'll be another one in the future, certainly not in the very near future, anyway. And then we looked at the routing of the pipe, the routing of the supply from the wells to the Chapel Ridge tank, and identified those properties that are currently not developable that could become developable, and what they would be developable as. And it's mostly housing. It's mostly residential uses. Roughly about 640, 650 acres that would be able to tie to that transmission line that's going from the wells to the Chapel Ridge tank. And that would pick up Mason's Bluff as well. The well at Mason's Bluff would be added to that system. And then from Chapel, Chapel Ridge, and Kirk can speak to this in more detail, I'm just giving an over, you know, thousand-foot overhead look. From Chapel, it would be pumped to the Northwoods Tank and then for distribution to the rest of the township from there. So that's what you got in that packet on March 30th, provided you some maps, provided you some history, a copy of the water supply contract that's currently in place. It is a perpetual contract. That means that it does not have a termination date. We negotiated it that way. The only thing that does terminate on a fixed date is the discount that's currently in place. So the contract itself is to continue, it's a perpetual contract that is changeable by court, by going to court. All perpetual contracts in the public sector can be challenged under public policy, and it would be a decision of the court then whether that contract would continue or not. So that's just one of the factors to consider in the future.
Mm-hmm.
So that's a quick run-through.
Yeah, good synopsis.
Thank you.
Let's see, we want to, Dulcey, do you want to give us your two cents? Your information is also at the back of the packet, about the housing side?
About the housing side, what we would possibly project for a potential home that would then become available based on the...
Why don't you come up so, make sure, get it on the YouTube?
Sure.
Thanks.
Sure.
And I'm not sure that's on. Yep, it sounds like it.
It sounds like it, yeah. So what I ended up doing to try to give you an idea of what we could anticipate for future development for single-family housing, we did a real conservative estimate that was around the maps that I was using. I didn't go into great detail with the planning and zoning department, but I came up with a real conservative, 471 acres roughly. And with the zoning there being the rural residential zoning, if there is well and septic requirements, they have to meet the 40,000 square feet, so that's roughly around an acre. But if you have township water available to the sites, it reduces the minimum site to 20,000 square feet, so you're now talking about half-acre parcels potentially for residential. The other thing to keep in mind, though, is not every property owner is going to split their property. So we were doing a real conservative guesstimation, and if somebody were to take their larger chunk of property, there's a couple of property owners that own more than 80 acres. If they were to do a Bishop Woods or a Hero Woods type of subdivision, being that there would be municipal water, so they could have the smaller tracts of land, and also bring in Mason's Bluff online for township water, we estimated roughly around 95 potential new homes coming in within that district. That would be approximate minimum. Again, if anybody were to go through the process to create a subdivision, that number would be a lot higher. So we went, well, when I say we, our department went through the assessment role, and the average residential home in Marquette Township is at 200,000 true cash value. And if they were to build a home within this district that is going to be possibly served by the water project, it would generate a tax bill of approximately $2,700 with our current millage rate, at the homestead rate. And it would be approximately $500 per building site that would be for just Marquette Township's millages. The unknown there, though, that's real difficult, is to know what the intent of the public would be. We have been getting a lot of phone calls, I will say, from people that are wanting to locate to the township, that are really looking for places to build. Now, when they're contacting some of the private landowners that have larger chunks of property, some of those landowners have not been willing to split off any, but there's been a couple that are actually inquiring about the possibility of going through the subdivision and creating a plat. So there are a couple of property owners that have some of the larger chunks that are looking at possibly doing a Bishop Woods here on Woods, more of your half-acre to one-acre size parcels, and avoiding going through the Land Division Act and just making a subdivision. So we have been busy fielding calls, probably one or two a month in that area, people looking for property, so.
And you just said municipal water for the half-acre, 20,000 square feet?
Yes, yeah, for the 20,000.
Septic or sewers, not as much?
Well, the difference is with, like, if you have 40,000 square feet, and if you're not able to have, that would be the minimum to be able to provide a well in septic, according to our zoning. So if you have municipal water, then you just have to have enough room for your septic and drain field.
Okay.
So it's a little different if you have municipal water. It's a smaller site size.
Sure.
Sure.
John?
The random inquiries of developers, north or south?
It would be on the south, along County Road 492, actually around Lake Enchantment area.
None up north?
I'm not following, where are you referring to?
Out Forestville.
Um, no, not, they have the Blue Heron's Bluff, too, that's just been developed out there. But that's not, this has been just specifically for this water district that we were doing the analysis on.
I only ask because we've got water and sewer to the entrance to Hero Woods.
They have not inquired at this time. I don't know, Kirk may know if he's gotten any questions on that, but I just specifically was putting information together for the south side of the highway.
Thank you.
Yep.
The only, the only development that we've been contacted about, it turned out not to be in Marquette Township, it was actually on the Nagani Township of that line up the Forestville Road. I have not spoken with any developers who have looked at property beyond Hero Woods in terms of looking at it. I know Lynn Swadley had some interest in some property up there, but I don't know if he ever went forward and acquired that. But I'm not aware of any development plan beyond Hero Woods at this point, anyway. I haven't heard anything.
The only reason I'm asking is, it's kind of a balancing thing. As we look at pre-proposed projects, that's, when you look at the total dollars invested, it's not a whole lot to go with water and sewer to go north.
Yeah, that's true. The only other place that we've had any real active development recently is up 550, up on the lake side of County Road 550, heading up towards Big Bay. There's been some transfer of property up there that folks are looking at breaking up building parcels on the lakeside, not so much on the opposite side of 550, but on the lakeside. I think there are two or three, I think there's two or three of them going up there. Clark's have one up further, further up, and I know there was a larger chunk south of that, north of Middle Island Point, that was in contention for family breakup that would have resulted in smaller parcels, but I don't know where that's at.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Excuse me, any more questions? Pete?
I talked to a couple of people who asked me about it, and they're a little concerned about the city, the way they're going and expansion with the hospital and all that. They fear that pretty soon you won't be able to live in the city with the taxes. So that's some of their concerns, that they want to come out here. And they always mention the roads that we have. That's just a plus for us. But they do, they're a little concerned about what's going to happen in the city in the coming years and so on.
I can tell you that after speaking with quite a few of the real estate agents in the area, they're real concerned as well. The inventory that they have for sale is at a low. They're pretty much, if a house is getting listed, they're getting multiple offers right away if it's priced right. I mean, you will have houses that'll be on the market because the seller isn't in any urgency to sell it. So, I mean, they may keep their price where, you know, their dream price to get, but if they have it priced good and correctly at the market, they're selling. And there's been a real push. Our properties aren't staying in Marquette Township for sale for very long if they're priced correctly.
There was just a report this morning that the target, from a Realty Group, the target price right now is $150 to $250, which is good for Trow Bridge. I mean, it's good for our residential area, but the majority of the property that we would be talking about would be for residential development. It would not, it wouldn't be suitable for industrial, or, well, it's not even zoned for industrial or anything like that. It would all be zoned as residential development. And, you know, Trustee Larue is correct, the future development here for the township is mainly going to be residential as opposed to commercial. We're pretty much built out on the commercial along the highway, unless businesses are interested in moving back off of the highway, which we've had some. I mean, Saclay's just opened in the Jandron Building. You know, there's a, there's a number of those kinds of developments going on. We've got building going on right across the street over here. New buildings are going up and being occupied off the street. So there, there is some interest in moving back. Myers was a big one. I mean, Meyer moved back quite a ways off of the highway. They do have highway access, but they're quite a ways back. But most of that development is going to be smaller scale. It's not going to be large-scale development. It's not going to be industrial development, you know, in this central corridor. Most of the, most of the development that's going to occur going forward, you know, that would be under consideration with whether or not you do Phase Two, would be residential primarily.
Do you have another question?
Just one more. The residential development, I think, I think that's absolutely the future. But I think, real estate-wise, we can look with great yellow pride to a large real estate operation moving in just across the street.
And I think that's what you're going to see with the development right here within, within the Commerce and Venture area. That's the kind of, the kind of development that the property owners are looking at, is those kinds of office-type structures.
Thanks again.
Anything else for Dulcey? We can probably let you go then.
Okay.
Unless you want to stay.
No, I've got so much on my desk right now.
I figured.
Again, I'm always available by email, or you can stop in my office if you have any other questions or need any other clarification.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
It's like Dulcey said, we tried to be conservative on this, you know, we told you we would, you know, not painting a rosy picture per se, but, but trying to be conservative on what the uses are. Now, you know, the properties, the map that I gave you does identify the property owners. Some of those owners are not going to be interested in breaking up large pieces of their property. They, you know, they bought the big chunk of property because they want privacy. But like everything else, if the price gets right, they'll sell. You know, we've seen that everywhere else. People didn't want, didn't want any part of selling until the price got to the appropriate price, and then they moved, which will likely occur again. I mean, everybody's the same, the same way, you know? If you get to the right price point, you move on it, whether it's a car or a house or whatever.
And some of them are waiting for water, too.
Well, they are, you know, and...
They go well or they can't, or whatever.
Well, and the, the issue is, is that they really can't do anything with the property without access to sustainable water. You know, we did, when we were doing our initial explorations, we explored all over that area. And there are, you know, there are water resources, groundwater resources, that would be suitable for individual homes in some of those areas, but most of the areas are not. They're not, they're not in a position to be able to have access to water because of rock and other geological issues on the property. So municipal water would be the only recourse that they would have. But again, you know, the whole point of this discussion is, we are spending a lot of money maintaining this program going forward and keeping it basically shovel-ready. And if the board does not have any intention of going forward, we need to stop. If you do have an intention of going forward, then, you know, we have current, current plans, and then it becomes an economic question.
Any immediate questions right now, before we move on? Okay. Kirk, I was looking for kind of an overview again from you, too, explain where we are, especially for the folks that need to know backup information, haven't been following our meetings, or don't know the history back to 2004, or 2004, you don't have to go back that far. But your, your take on the importance of this, why we should do it, or how it should be different, or we know that Mason's Bluff was, is one of the concerns that the developer would like to move forward, his resources are limited, and they're kind of waiting to see what we're going to do, or go off their own. But, I mean, that's just one consideration. So if you want to throw your two cents in, please.
Commenting on John's question to Dulcey about the Forestville area. It's true that right now there's not a big demand, but that could change in the future, you know, especially with possibly, you know, Longyear breaking up. But our focus, you know, obviously, my focus has been to supply water to meet the demands of the township. So in all these calculations and everything that we've done so far, we have not included the whole township. So, for example, Forestville area has not been. So, you know, we always work with the planning commission, what is the zoning now? What do you think the zoning is going to be in the future? You know, what kind of development are we going to be getting? And certainly, you know, looking at the numbers, the population has increased in Marquette Township. In fact, I just, today I was looking at the, some of the census trends, and it's, in just the last couple of decades, the township has grown pretty much the same amount that the city and the county have declined. So that kind of shows you. And that's just the population, you know? And the commercial increase has probably been even greater than, you know, the population increase. So that's basically why we're doing this. So in other words, and there's also the dependence or independence from the city. And, you know, I'm going to be honest and say, we're never going to be totally independent of the city. And we shouldn't be, you know? Because obviously, they do have a huge supply of water, and so, but the question is, you know, there are always going to be political situations, you know? We've got a new contract, but things could change in the future. They always do, especially when you get people discussing, you know, big issues like water and many other things as well. So we need to be as much as possible independent. And we have been, you know, we've been really fortunate. We have had this huge increase in both population and commercial, so we have been fortunate enough to be able to, to meet the needs both today and into the future. But of course, the, you know, the hard part is keeping your projections updated for the future, because the future is coming faster and faster, it seems like. So in terms of the system expansion, that the Downtown Development Authority, the Tax and... Next thing, just back in the, whenever that was, the 90s, early 90s, I believe, that was a huge factor, because we were able to do expansion without, that was actually financed through the increase in taxes that we were able to capture. So that was actually paid for without township having to come in and borrow money or just take a bunch of money out of pocket. So, but that, that's pretty much ended. I mean, it had, the program hasn't ended, but I think the focus is more on other, other stuff other than water and sewer. So the man is still there. And the reason that we started this Phase Two of the project was because of, we weren't able to meet the demands of the future without more supply, because we don't have the huge supply that the cities got. Okay? We basically have pockets of water scattered around the township. So it's like throwing darts, only we, you know, there's some science to it, and we've been pretty fortunate. But it's not, you know, we can't just go out and drill and we got water. So again, we've been pretty fortunate, but we have identified sources, you know, that are really, you know, necessary unless we just stop growing. Okay? And I don't see that happening. So to me, that's, that's the most urgent thing. And it's true that we've got this discount on water that someday is going to run out, and that's great. But another factor to consider is, the growth is actually, like you said, it's still occurring, especially in the commercial area, and actually, housing is still growing as well. There was a lull for a couple of years there, but we're making a comeback. So even things that went away are coming back, you know, and redeveloping. So my point being, we're going to reach a point where we cannot supply even today's needs, and I don't know when that's going to occur. It could be this year, it could be next year. And that's a point where we're going to need to go back to the city and buy more water. So, and that's going to entail more than just buying water. That means we're going to have to start, I'm going to have to start firing up pump stations. As an example, right now, because of this well project, we basically don't normally use the Cox Pump Station or the Northwoods Pump Station. The reason, the Cox Pump Station was the very first part of the original system, and that was used to pressurize the system from basically Cox Avenue over to Wright Street, which was the end of our system. And then when we started expanding during that DDA period, that's when we expanded out to the Northwoods. Okay? So then we had to pump from, pump from Cox to the Northwoods, and then the Northwoods, I had to run that 24/7 just to pressurize, you know, the area in close elevation proximity to Northwoods. So I was... So, uh, I was able to eliminate those two big items when we put in the well system. So now we do have an extra pump station for the wells, obviously. But we pump, that's not twenty-four seven, and we pump to the, uh, new Chapel Ridge Tank. The Chapel Ridge Tank fills the Northwoods by gravity, and it's all, it's all gravity. So, uh, and then we still receive water from, from the city. So my point being, once we reach the, the capacity of our existing wells, and it's not just, we have to meet the, the maximum demand, so, and we have to meet a future maximum demand. And the future, like I said, is coming quicker and quicker. So therefore, that demand is getting greater. But when that happens, okay, the first thing, depending, as soon as we step over that line, I gotta start up the Cox Pump Station. Well, you all know that the rates have, have gone up, you know, quite a bit. But, uh, something that just occurred to me, I, just last week, I got a letter from the BLP. We had an issue a couple of, a couple of months ago, where we had some operational electronic controls that weren't functioning correctly. So the Northwoods Tank was not calling for water. It was going down, it was emptying, but it wasn't calling for water. So what happened was the, uh, that tank was draining, and then the, also the North, or the Chapel Ridge Tank was draining just from normal demand. So what happened was, in order to get that, in fact, we reached a point where almost, they were both very close to empty. So in order to fill those tanks, we, we fired up the well pumps, which are not coming on either, and we fired up the Cox Pumps to fill the Northwoods. Well, uh, the letter that I got from the Northwoods was, we only did that for like less than two days. Our demand went up, okay? And if our, if our demand goes up one more time within the next six months, which it won't unless we use it again, but if I'm, well, if I am gonna use it in the future, it'll be like every day, not only are we paying a higher rate, but we jump to a higher class, okay, a different rate class. So for example, the bill for that month, because of that, uh, event, because of demand changes, was five times the normal, the normal month. So my point being, uh, that's yet another reason that, you know, this project is essential.
So I might clarify that, you got a letter from the city?
The BLP.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
Okay. The power demand, not the water demand?
Same as what happens, same as what happens at the ski hill when they turn on their snowguns.
They get a demand.
They get a huge demand charge because of the additional demand to run the snowguns. Well, that's what happens with us when we have to fire up the additional pump to refill tanks, as we, we get a demand charge for that period of time. But after you've had that demand charge enough times, it moves you to a higher rate for good. So, you know, that's what we're trying to avoid, is moving to that higher rate, because that would be a huge cost, uh, increase in the electrical use of the township.
I know exactly what you're talking about, because as we've become busier as a company, our demand charge has gone up, and we're at that level now all the time. So I know what you mean.
Yeah, you know, what Kirk was referring to earlier is, you know, we're, we're always chasing the DEQ requirement. And the DEQ requirement is that future maximum demand based on a twenty-five-year build-out projection that they do. And that's, you know, that's what we're always chasing as a municipality, is to ensure that we, we meet that demand, because that's what we have to meet now. That was the purpose for, for doing the construction of the first well, uh, well project, phase one, was to ensure that we could meet that demand regardless of what the city did with, with their political actions and impacting our, our contract. So, uh, you know, and basically, it's been doing exactly what it was planned to do. It serves the Northwoods and the Grove District, and that's what it was designed to do. It was also designed to work in concert with the second phase, which was then going to work with it, uh, in, in future development, and we never really did the second phase.
So Kirk, can we, if, if we had, you know, a million dollars, or two million, or whatever, and in, increase the infrastructure up four ninety-two, can we do any of that with the wells that we have right now? Could we go like a hundred feet, or maybe a mile, or, I mean?
Well, number one.
Based on our capacity of our wells and tied in with?
If we wanna keep going up four ninety-two, well, what happened would be, we would have to, uh, assuming we didn't do Morgan Meadows, I mean, excuse me, Mason's Bluff.
Mm-hmm.
We'd have to construct another pump station.
Okay.
Uh, at Chapel Ridge. So, and that, and that's why, when that developer first came in, the Mason's Bluff developer came in and said, I wanna build this development, and he showed us the location, and that would have required not just a pipe going from, you know, point A to point B, but it would have required a pump station. So, and, and that was the, when he came in, we were in the process of applying for this, this loan. We're already gonna do this project. So we said, well, why don't we just hold off, you know? And then when we complete our project, then you could just, you know, tap into the transmission main, coming down, bring it faster to development. And then all you gotta do is build the mains into development, which he did. He went ahead and built the mains into the development. And, and then when, when the township elected not to pursue that project, and the two million dollars that Randy mentioned, he had some of his funding, it was two million dollars, but that two million dollars would came off the principal of the loan.
Right.
But it also, that would have impacted the, the interest to over six hundred thousand dollars. So it was closer to three million dollars that we threw away. And that was true, truly free money. It was like, we're gonna give you this money.
Yep, no match.
Uh, but anyway, for whatever reason, it didn't happen. And that was when, uh, the developer agreed, in conjunction with us, you know, he built the mains, and then we shared the cost of putting in a well. But it's just a well, okay? So it needs a pump station. So with this, with Morgan Meadows, that well and pump station would then pump to the new tank, which would be farther down four ninety-two.
So what's, how much does a pump station cost?
Well, that's something that I do not see included in this information. Uh, and that could be probably, uh, you know, another half a million dollars.
Just for one pump station? Okay.
Our infrastructure runs to the Chapel Ridge Tank. To go beyond the Chapel Ridge Tank, you have to construct a pump station to be able to get it from the Chapel Ridge Tank anywhere further west along four ninety-two.
Okay, so would we have capacity to get that far to Chapel Ridge without having to worry about a pump station?
Well, you would, you would basically, all you'd be feeding would be Mason's Bluff. I mean, that's all you'd be feeding, that's the only development there is up there right now. You know, so you'd be building a pump station to, to service Mason's Bluff for like thirty homes, and the cost is just not.
No, I mean, even if we didn't have the pump station?
You have to have a pump station.
We've got capacity we don't have.
We still need the pump station if we go any farther, no matter what.
The elevation change.
Okay, gotcha.
So, you know, that's, that's why we, we end at the Mason's, or at the Chapel Ridge.
Where we are.
And that's why we can't serve Mason's Bluff. But Mason's Bluff is, they're on their own hook. There's a new property owner there, they know what they can develop. They've got a well, um, you know, and a bowl of water, basically is what they've got. It's not spring-fed, it's, it's basically whatever comes from rain, or from snow melt, or whatever, and that's what they're gonna tap into. But it's only gonna be a handful of homes. It's not gonna be the thirty to thirty-five, whatever the, the original estimate was, because that requires municipal water to be able to do that. There's an elevation change within Mason's Bluff itself, so it can't be gravity-fed. So, you know, so we didn't take into, any of that into consideration. Basically, what the question was, is what would it, what would be the pluses and minuses of doing phase two project? And that's what I focused on.
Okay. No, that's fine, I just needed clarity on... Yes, Dave?
I guess I'm the guy that originally brought this up probably a year ago.
Mm-hmm.
One of the things that prompted bringing this up was the discussion previous to that about the pumping stations into, they could get water up to Mason's Bluff so they could finish developing that. And the discussion at the time was several hundred thousand dollars to put those pumping stations in to serve thirty homes. But if you had Morgan Meadows in, you didn't need the pumping stations. And it just, it seems like we, this, this plan keeps hanging out there, that we never make a determination on what we're gonna do with it. And like the manager says, it's costing money to have it open and active. We just simply need to make a decision. I'm not suggesting that we need to make a decision this year even, but we need to make a decision on what direction we want to head, and, and we need to base it on, on some known factors. Couple of questions I get right offhand is, is Northwoods and Chapel Hill are normally charged from the wellfields, correct?
Yes.
Yep.
Um, we can charge those from the Cox Tank if we have to, correct?
Not both of them, only just one.
Yep.
We can, okay. And Northwoods feeds Chapel Hill, right?
No.
Or is it the other way around? Okay. If we cha, if we charge Northwoods from the Cox District, you can't, you can't mix the water supplies, correct? You can't mix well water and city water?
That's according to the city.
You can, yeah.
Well, according to the city.
But I mean, basically.
That's according to the city, but there's no DEQ restriction, and there's no reason not to mix the water.
But our, all the districts are pretty separated, I mean. So in other words, it would definitely be, if I had to start using the Cox Station, uh, because of, we don't have enough capacity in the wells, it's gonna be city water going from Cox to Northwoods.
Right. City will not.
Okay, and the city is, is, I mean, it's common that they transfer water back and forth from the Cox Tank into and out of the Cox Tank, back into the city system.
It goes back to the city.
Back to, to the link.
By gravity, though.
Yeah.
Okay. By, by whatever means, but?
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Right. Serves Lincoln, but it doesn't go into their full system. It's only from Lincoln West, does not go into their full system. They, they won't allow it into their, no co-mingling within their system. So we serve, we serve the city residents that are Lincoln West.
Okay, so the, the wellfields, if you take the Cox District out of the equation, the wellfields are capable right now of supplying everything that we have left?
Right, yeah.
And you suggested that when we had to run the pumps to, uh, supply the Northwoods and Chapel Hill tanks, that was gonna kick us into a higher rate, correct?
If we.
And we had to use those, and we had to use those pumps because of just normal demand?
Well, we need to use them because, to fill the tank.
Yeah, it wasn't.
But because of normal demand?
It wasn't normal demand, it was a situational issue. Had an equipment failure, basically, that did not order the tanks to fill, so we had to pump.
Okay, so normally, that's not an issue, that's more of a?
Normally, it's not an issue.
Correct, yeah.
So currently, with Cox, it's not in the equation, we have enough water?
Yes.
Plus the reserves we need right now to supply everything else we have?
Right today, yes.
What happens if they, if we start any expansion? How much do we, how much additional water can we use before we start, uh, reaching the, the limit of our demand with, we have to have a reserve set there also, right? We can't pump the wells at a hundred percent, there's, we can pump to a maximum, and then the rest has to be considered reserve, correct?
By the city, yeah. Fire flow. Basically, what, what, that's, that's what's been happening, when we have additional demand, we've been purchasing it from the city.
Okay, one of the, one of the problems I have with, with the whole city contract scenario is, is it appears the contract goes on forever, uh, with the exception that we lose our?
Discount.
The discounted rate. And the only other thing I see in the contract that we, they can put a cap on, is they can put a cap on how much water they, we could take.
No.
No, they, they have to, the current language is that they have to supply our demand. The issue, the issue comes in.
I thought there was a cap in there.
No.
That's kind of unusual, but there's not a cap.
There's, there's not, there's not currently a cap.
Correct.
Right.
But they can put a cap in there.
Not arbitrarily.
They, well.
We have to agree to it.
Well, unless, unless they go to court and have the perpetual contract overturned as being against public policy, which has occurred in numerous other places in the country and the state. They would argue that it's against public policy to have an agreement that restricts their capability of recovering costs and covering costs, which they have not done as yet, but could. It's a circuit court issue.
And, yeah, one of the other questions, I guess, that I didn't see for information is, if our rate, water rates to the residents were based solely on what we're getting from the wellfield, water rates for the wellfield have to be one thing, and water rates off the city water has to be something else. And we're coming up with an average rate, correct?
It's a blended rate.
Yeah.
Well, it's, same thing.
Same thing.
It's, you know, the budget's got, I don't know how many liners, forty, fifty liners. The cost of the city water is one line.
I think what Dave is, is asking is, if, if we made no further improvements or expansion of the system, how far could we develop utilizing our existing capacities?
Correct.
You mean beyond where we are?
Beyond where we are right now. And, and not exceed?
Not get into DEQ.
The daily capacity, but not get into our reserve?
Well, and to still meet DEQ requirements.
Right, right.
But it would stop our expansion.
You'd stop your expansion.
On top of my head, I would have to say, we can't go any farther.
Without, without improving the system somehow, whether?
Well, whether it be pumping, pumping stations or whatever, but just, just the water that's available.
To go any further west, it, going west, it's not a matter of available water, it's a matter of getting it there.
Mm-hmm.
Because of the elevation changes. So to go any further west than the Chapel Ridge Tank along four ninety-two, there has to at least be a pumping station to get the water to that higher elevation.
So we're gonna need a pumping station regardless, right in there, if they move it.
Well, if, to go any, to go for any, any further expansion in this area, Mason's Bluff or anything in that.
Well, that was, that was discussed a couple of years ago, about the pumping station that was required to, to move it up to Mason's Bluff and connect that.
And that would be specifically to benefit Mason's Bluff. I mean, that wouldn't really benefit anybody else, really, at that point, unless you built, projected that there was going to be additional development, and you built a larger pumping station. But the piece of property, the, the lot that we have, we have actually two lots in Mason's Bluff. Is it two lots, or is it one lot that has both the well and the pump location?
It's one, I can see.
Okay, so, so the, there's, we, we own property in there, basically, that has the well on it, the test well that's currently being utilized, and the location for the pumping station. But that was designed around a specific size. So that was to primarily serve Mason's Bluff, capture the water from that well, and move it to the Chapel Ridge Tank.
Mm-hmm.
But that was with water coming from the west.
And with respect to, to water from the city, the contract expires in twenty twenty-six, but other than losing our pricing, uh, there's nothing really can happen to our water supply?
No, right now, right now, there is no other contingency in the current water supply contract, the water supply agreement with the city. The, the only contingency is that by December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-six, one of two things is gonna happen. Either we will have utilized five hundred and sixty thousand dollars worth of water under the discount, or it adds, period. And then the fifty-nine cents comes back on the, the rate.
Whichever comes first.
Whichever comes first.
Yeah. I guess what I'm, what I'm curious, and I haven't seen yet in any of the information that's provided, is, is the rate that the residents will see. Let's say, if the township was water-independent from the city, what would the rates be? Based on our wellfield right now, versus with the city in the mix, with the fifty-nine cents per thousand gallons added, with, I mean, obviously, they've had rate increases, and I know that, that they do a three-year water study, and that goes on, but that, and that keeps adjusting up.
Right, that sets the rate for three years.
Right. But I haven't seen where we stand with the city water rates, with, with their res, what our residents are paying for city water versus what city residents are paying for city water. What can we anticipate, uh, after twenty twenty-six? What could we reasonably expect the water rates from the city to change to?
Well, we're, we're, our residents are always gonna be paying more than the city residents for the water, because we're buying it at the wholesale rate, and then adding our cost to it to transmit it.
Right.
So when I- So we're never going to be at the same rate as the city.
I'm not suggesting we should be at the same rate. I'm wondering what the difference is.
That I don't know. I'd be trying to forecast something into the future and I don't know what...
Well, but it's a certain number. Today, it's a certain number.
Yeah, I mean, do you know that right off?
Well, if you had to pay 59 cents a gallon, 1,000 gallons more.
What the actual cost of the water, well, you know, what does it cost? Well, they just shifted to the per thousand gallon rate, so this would be the first billing.
And all I'm suggesting is right now, today, with our preferential pricing, there is a difference between what the city residents pay and what the township residents pay. There's a per thousand gallon price difference. And when our 59 cents a thousand gallons goes away, that's going to change. Based on, based on the rate increases that the city residents have seen in their own rates, we could accept, the township residents could expect after 2026 to see their rates do the same thing.
Well, it won't be exactly the same thing because assuming, we're not going to get rid of the contract, I hope, totally.
Well, even if we, contract aside, I mean, 59 cents goes away.
That goes away, yes, so it's going to go up.
So...
But I mean, beyond that, it won't go up at the same rate that the city rate's going up, I'll put it that way.
What's to stop it from doing that?
Not that portion of the water because...
What's to stop it from doing that?
Nothing's going to stop it, you know.
The only thing that stops it is the water rates, the rate study.
No, I'm talking, I'm talking about if you broke the system into two phases, two sections. One is well water and the other one is city water. The well water is being provided at a cost, whatever that is. The city water is being provided to the residents at a cost.
Correct.
No, there's a cost involved. We need to compare those two costs.
Well, they're not the same cost because you have to add for us to get the water, we have to add our costs onto the city's cost.
It's still a cost for the city water.
Well, that's a piece of what our cost is.
In supplying the water.
No, I know what you're asking.
In supplying the city water back to the residents of the township.
I know what you're asking, but you can't take the rate that a city resident pays for their water and compare it to a rate that the township pays without considering the additional cost that it takes for us to receive the water.
That additional cost is always going to be there.
Yeah.
So...
Right, so the rates will never be the same.
I'm not suggesting that they should be the same.
So what difference is that going to make?
I'm suggesting that there should be a comparison. You should know, if you're water independent, you're working totally off well water, what could you expect the rates to be?
We're not going to be totally independent.
I want Dave to, if we could, what would it be?
But we never will be totally independent from the city.
So, I mean, that's kind of irrelevant.
We have a joint water system. I mean, that's never been an objective, to be totally independent from the city. It's to be less dependent on the city for our water resources because in the past, the threat has been reduced capacity to the township to restrict development and growth. That's been, that was the issue we went to court over. They were going to restrict the amount of water.
Because they want to control.
Yes, yeah. Basically, what the posture was in 2003 was this year you use that much water. You will not use more than that water in the future, period. That's all we will sell you.
And you're saying that they can't do that now? I'm seeing a contract where they can cap the water we can take.
Yeah, they can't cap the water unless, unless there's a threat to the city residents by doing so, then yes, they can restrict the flow to the township. As a for instance, if there's a repair that needs to be done to the supply, to the station somehow, that the city can't afford, their residents will take priority over the township, which means the water to us would be restricted. That's a provision in the contract. They are a city function. We are buying water from them. Their primary customer is their own residents. That's what I'm saying. We have a perpetual water agreement. That simply means they will provide us water. Doesn't provide any provision of how much water on the annual, or the tri-annual water rate study. But even then, that water rate study takes into consideration the cost factors on both sides to come up with what an equitable rate is, depending upon costs.
And they are still locked into that formula to determine equitable rate even beyond 2026?
Well, it's every three years.
I understand that, but beyond 2026?
Unless you change, unless there's a change into who the consultant is and they apply a different theory, which happened six years ago. They applied a different theory and it cost us 7 percent more.
But all our discussions that we had before was that we had, I mean, we had surveys staying, I think, $20,000 to capture all the water we can. We have a person come in and do the studies and stuff like that. Every trade magazine captures all the water you can, no matter what you read. Now, we wanted a bargaining chip, so if we don't capture more water, if we're, we're not going to be, like you say, we're always going to be buying water, but it's going to give us a little more leverage to control that water, that rate that we're going to be charged.
Well, we're always going to be buying water to service the Cox district.
Not necessarily.
But we don't need to buy additional water from the city, especially if it's more expensive than well water, to service outside of the Cox district. Is that a fair statement?
Well, I would certainly hope so, but that's what I'm saying. We might be reaching that point, somewhere it's going to be. But was your question initially, if we didn't have city water, what would the rates be?
No, my question is if...
Well, the well water, the cost of well water versus the city water.
The difference between what the city resident pays for city water and what we pay for city water. And what would the cost be if we only provided well water?
But the city is not only the...
Was that it?
Yeah.
Close. I mean, I realize that Cox tank is serviced, gets their water from the city and that there's a portion of the city residents that get their water back from the Cox tank. And Trowbridge gets their water from the city. I understand all that, but...
The corridor does too.
Do we have to expand it? If we don't expand it beyond that, because right now we can pump city water out to Northwoods, right?
We can, yes.
Yes.
Okay, and if demand requires it, that's what we do, correct?
Right.
Would it be possible then to expand on the city water and start pumping it someplace else? Up the sky takes off.
Well, the corridor's covered. I don't know how far to the second level.
That's what I'm asking. That's more city water, correct?
It's more city water and more...
As the corridor develops west to the boundary, you're talking more city water. It doesn't have to be that way. You could be talking more well water.
Right.
Could.
Okay, I'm asking you what the cost difference is.
That we're buying city water or our own, basically, that's what he's talking about. But the city is not the only secondary source of water for our township.
I understand that, but in order to provide that capacity of water, you need to finish phase two, which becomes a cost of that water. That's what I'm saying. It's not just the water. There are other costs that have to be added to it to do that comparison.
And I understand that. All I'm suggesting is that if we do nothing and the development out the corridor continues to the township line and we have to provide that water, that is going to be city water, correct?
Right now, yes.
Okay, if we don't do anything else, at what cost? Are rates going to go up? Are rates going to go down?
Rates won't go up because right now, right now, as I said, the contract requires the city to provide us the water necessary to meet our demand. So if up the sky develops and goes forward, we just buy more water. We just buy more water and we charge them as the new users to cover the cost of that water.
And that's higher than what we bought if we pumped our own.
Our rate will go up under the scenario you just mentioned, which is we have to expand and we have to, so there'll be an increase in the water that we're purchasing.
If the township uses 100 gallons of water a day and 40 percent of it is from the city and 60 percent of it is from our wellfields, that sets the rates at X. If we expand sufficiently out the corridor, the 41 corridor, so now the difference is 60 percent of the water is from the city and 40 percent is from the wellfields, the rates change.
Now, wait a minute. If you go beyond the township boundary...
No, not beyond.
No.
Within. Up to the boundary.
Up to the boundary is all that's in the contract. You can't sell it to Ish for me or somebody else.
I understand that.
No, but you're mixing words, Dave, because you're talking about rates versus cost. The rates, if you're saying the rate to the city, the rate to the customers, you're mixing your words. You need to be more definitive.
The rates that we've charged, yes. Our rates will go up.
Our rates would go up if we're using a larger percentage.
At the same rate that we've always been buying. It's larger volume and also our electric bill is going to go up, which goes back into the rate.
That's what I'm saying, that we don't have. If 100 percent of your water bill today, that establishes rates, if 40 percent of that's based on city water and 60 percent is based on well water, and if sufficient expansion happens along the US 41 corridor or going north or wherever you want to go, that changes that 40, 60 and flips it the other way and now it's 60, 40, our rates are going to go up because of that.
What rates?
Correct.
The cost from the city or the rates to the resident?
The cost of the water isn't going to go up, but the rate is going to go up.
The rates to the resident is going to go up.
Because there's an additional cost. It's not because of any...
Our rates are made of cost.
I understand all that.
Look at transportation.
All I'm talking about is the residents, what the residents are going to see on their bill. That's going to change, depending on the percentage of water we're getting from the city versus...
No, it doesn't depend on that. It depends on the cost of supplying that water. It doesn't depend on the rates, not right now.
I'm not talking about rates from the city.
That's what I asked you to qualify.
I'm talking about the residents' rates, the water rates that the residents are going to see.
It's not going to go up just because of using more water. It's going to go up
because the cost to do it is more. Wages are going to go up in the meantime if we have to do more infrastructure with piping or whatever, road construction. That's the cost of delivering that water. It doesn't matter where we get it from.
The city for pumping and things such as that.
That's my question. Does it matter where we get it from? If 60 percent of the water comes from the wellfields and 40 comes from the city, if we flip that over and 40 percent comes from the wellfield and 60 percent comes from the city, does the residents' water rates go up to reflect that?
That's true.
It might because of whatever the cost is for each.
It absolutely will.
But I don't know that that's ever been defined because I asked for that 10 years ago.
That's all I'm asking.
Why didn't you ask that to start with?
I bet.
You know, it will, yes. That cost will go up, but at the same time, those that are benefiting from getting that water now are paying for the infrastructure. The developers are paying to extend the infrastructure out there to get the water.
What I see on my rate, what I see on my per thousand gallon rate as a resident is going to change.
Because other cost factors will go up as a result of that, yes. But that's not driven by the water. That's driven by additional costs because of the expansion of the system.
It's not just driven by the city either.
The per gallon rate, the per gallon rate...
It's going to keep going up no matter what.
But...
Because costs increase. The cost of doing business increases.
I'm obviously not getting my point across.
No, I think you are. I think Dave's on. I think that you also have to keep in mind that as you expand, the existing residents are going to get the bill.
Well, they always do, for anything, whether it's roads or whatever.
But the point is, is that the question that comes up is how do you do that in the proper way for the least added expense for our residents?
Well, and that was exactly the discussion that took place in 2009 when this whole issue was settled because we received $195,000 in cash from the city. And the question that the board struggled with then was, what do we do with that? It's $195,000 influx to cover our costs. So do we apply it to only the Grove and Northwoods district to benefit those folks because they were the ones that were directly involved? Or do we spread it over the entire system so everybody in the township derives the benefit? The question was then asked, what if we have an increase in cost in the system? Do we follow the same process? And the answer was yes. So since 2009, every expenditure is spread over the entire township, all users, equally.
And that's a standing policy.
That's right. That's the way we operate today.
And if we want to change that, we can. But as of right now, that's what's in place.
That was a change in 2009 because it was not previously done. And that's what you hear when people stand up at the podium and say, well, we had our water system done, we had to pay the whole thing. We don't want to spread it over the whole district now for a benefit. That's what you hear because it was a different process. It was federally funded, required that way. 2009, this board made a policy decision, different. Not this board, but the board.
Still don't have your...
Thank you.
Well, the answer to your question is yes. It's going to cost more. It will, and the residents will see it.
Okay, the rest of my question is, how much?
That I can't tell you right now because we don't know what the incremental cost of that is. There's going to be a demand charge for the electricity. We don't know what that'll be. So, I mean, but it'll be different.
Is there any way to forecast that?
We can guess. I mean, it would be just an educated guess.
It's going to be 8 percent increase.
You know, based upon history, we can do an educated guess on that, but that wasn't part of the discussion that went into what I gave you.
I'm not suggesting you didn't do my job. I'm just trying to get some more information.
To an end, Dave, what difference would that make?
Whatever we can do that.
What difference does it make?
If it's going to be, if it's going to be more expensive and you can't tie in the cost of phase two, but you should have an idea if you continue with phase two, what the residents can expect to see on their water bill.
We can do...
And if you don't...
They can tell us that.
Well, we can do an example. Would this help to answer your question? We can do an example. We can predict what Myers is going to use for water on that expansion. And we can predict based upon the plan that we have, what the demand for up the sky would be. We can predict that. And then we can do some calculations in terms of what, Perk can do some calculations in terms of what would, what would that likely look like to the residents with that expansion?
Well, I've been saying this all along, as we put all these debt service fees in there, and I understand why we do, but the bottom line is, is a residence bill is X number of dollars. The average resident uses however many gallons he uses. I don't even know if we've determined what the average use is yet.
Three thousand.
What, averages?
Three thousand.
It depends on whether it's spring or summer or winter or whatever.
But there's still an average over the year.
I think it's three thousand.
Well, it's around 4,500.
So whatever that average number is, if it's 3,500 gallons, then that's the average. So a residence bill based on that average use of 3,500 gallons is going to be this, with all the debt service fees put in there and the whole nine yards. And if you do phase two and roll all the debt service fees in there and the whole nine yards, that same residence bill is going to be this. And if we don't do anything, and forecast the normal, when the debt service fees are paid off and they drop off the bill, the residents on certain years, if we do nothing, their $3,500 average use is going to change to, their water bill's going to be this. We need to see that. What is the forecast for what net changes? What happens if you bring phase two online in 2025? What's going to happen to those, that bill? Because the only thing I'm concerned about is what the residents' water bill looks like. I couldn't care less what we're paying the city for water.
Right.
It's what the residents' water bill looks like.
And that's one of the reasons Retari said he didn't want to pursue this until we had some of that debt already off of there so that they wouldn't see a significant increase in their bill because of the debt.
I can understand the theory. What I don't understand is, is we should be able to forecast it out so that we know exactly when all this is going to happen, what the residents' water bill is going to look like as we go along, and then put the change in there with the phase two and show a comparison of what those bills are going to look like and just match them up.
And those answers will help us understand the urgency of proceeding quickly.
But you can only go so far because you have to really guesstimate, like Randy said, with Meyer.
Everything in life is an educated guess. We know how much the debt service fees are affecting the water bill right now. And we know when they're dropping... And we know when they're dropping off and we know what the change in the residence bill is going to be when they do. And I'm suggesting that not so much a price per gallon figure, but a total bill. This is what the water user is going to see on his bill. And this is how it's going to change when those debt service fees drop off. And then, oop, here comes Phase Two. We're going to put this much back on. And this is how it's going to change. And this is what that same bill is going to look like for 3,500 gallons. And this is what it's going to look like. We should be able to forecast that out for the next 10 or 20 years.
Then you'd still, whoops, sorry. You'd still have to use Dulce's model and out of the 600 and some acres that could be affected, go with 400. I mean, there are a lot of extrapolating that has to go on to guess because there are so many factors. I mean, what if Myers is in business for two years and they close down? You would be projecting, and I just use them as an example. You would be projecting them for the next 10 years, but they may not be here. So, I mean, there's so many things.
Those are factors that you can't control.
Right.
But it's called an educated guess for a reason. I mean, Myers is probably not going to close down and, and expansion is probably not going to quit.
It could be Riverside. It could be any of them.
Could be any of them.
It could be somebody that's big and significant.
That's why I would refer this whole thing back to the manager because he's the educated person. He makes the educated guesses.
We made some estimates along those lines in, in what you, what you got on March 30th. You know, based, based upon, we looked at three different things. We looked at what the 2009 proposed price of the project was and then what the, what the current estimated price could be within a range. So, we figured that based on current population, because I don't want to project out, you know, saying, okay, we've got 647 acres. That's going to be 130 new households. It's going to generate this. They're going to draw that. We didn't go that far. But we said based upon current data that we have, current projections and current, current users, it would range anywhere from an additional 1014 a month to a high of 1422 per month, either as debt retirement or added to water bills or in some combination. But that's the gross cost.
For what year timeframe?
Right now.
Right now.
We did it today.
Okay.
Because I, I mean, we didn't want to go out. We told you we were going to be conservative about this and not go out and say, all right, we're going to have 130 new households and we're going to have 500 new businesses and we're going to do this and do that.
That's why I say.
So therefore, the cost is 59 cents, you know, 5,000.
Yeah, his request is, there's, the numbers are too nebulous.
Based on, based on current conditions, if you decided today to build Phase Two and it was done tomorrow, it would add between 1014 and 1422 per month to an individual water bill, either as a fixed, you know, a fixed dollar amount or blended to the water rates or in some combination like you've done in the past. That's based on what the current estimated cost of the system would be with no outside funding, totally funded internally, DWRS.
Randy, let me ask you a question. The Cox, Busso Station was constructed in 1973. Northwoods was constructed in 1991. What effect did that have on the bill from 1973 to 1991? How much of a difference?
I'm sure.
I think that's what you're trying to find if we did that.
It's in our budget book.
No, no, but I'm just saying.
It is.
That's what we were trying to find out. It's what effect is it going to on the water bill for the thing if we add another pump.
I don't know.
Right. What happened back here, back when we did it in 1991?
Yeah, I have no idea what, obviously, it was a cost and it would have been blended into the water rate at that point or some, was it, did you do debt retirement on those or did?
You're talking about what?
When the cities were built.
Specifically, you're talking about 1991, what?
70.
73. We had, in 1973, that was it. Then we come up back here to Northwoods.
Northwoods in 1991.
What effect did, in 1991, did it have increase over, or build at that time?
Well, we had a couple of projects in 91. We had the sewer project.
Right.
That was totally different.
It's kind of hard just to separate them.
But we also started the expansion of the water system. And that had no impact because it was paid for out of capture taxes.
Well, that was the tax and financing district. And, you know, that doesn't exist anymore and you're probably never going to see that again because nobody will give up their taxes now. Everybody's pretty well strapped. But any increase in cost to the water or the sewer system results in an increase to the residents, whether it's a few cents or whether it's dollars. It doesn't matter what it is. Annual increase in wages or benefit cost or utility or whatever, all impacts the rate because that's where it comes from. It's an enterprise fund.
We should take water off there. I'm buying, I'm a baker. I'm baking bread. My costs are this. This is my wholesale cost. If I have to buy it from you, I got to add my operational costs and everything else is going to be higher.
Right, but you don't put all that into the memo. You put it into the price of bread so the sticker that shows up is this.
Yeah, exactly. But I think, you know.
Like, it's cheaper to make it than it is to buy it.
Your sticker is only, your price on there, well, it's only one number.
Yeah.
It's not 10 numbers.
Yeah.
That's all I'm looking for is one number.
Right. But I think where, I think where the board is at at this point, what we're asking the board is, are we realistically going to continue to look at Phase Two? Or is the board inclined to just say, we're never going to be able to afford Phase Two because we will not add that much money to the residents' utility bills. So, we're going to stay with the contract with the city, which is perfectly fine and perfectly viable.
If I understand what you're saying, you're always going to stay with the contract with the city anyway.
That's what he's asking.
No. If you, if you did Morgan Meadows, you're still going to have city contract to supply water to Cox today.
We don't, what I said was, we don't anticipate severing from the city because we have a combined water system. The water contract is a critter that we don't necessarily control. But the point is, it's currently in place and it's currently a perpetual agreement. It currently has a rate structure built into it. So, you certainly can take a position to say, that's what we're doing going forward. And that's been a position in the past. We're staying with status quo. We're going to keep getting water from the lake and that's what we're doing, period. We have our well field as a backup. We're done. If that's the case, then we won't spend any more time and money dealing with Phase Two. But if the board anticipates at some point going forward with Phase Two, then we need to know that rather than going back and forth and back and forth and back and forth because we're now on the cusp again of having to spend more money, update the plan to meet DEQ requirements if we're going to do anything going forward because now we're getting into a new DEQ cycle. That's what I'm trying to get to. We're either going to stop or we're going to continue to spend money. And that's, I need to know that for budget.
Okay. So, let me take us in a direction, a third direction, which is what I've been thinking about. I know you had a question. Does it relate to this or?
I'm going another direction.
Okay, that's what I wanted to say.
We're going for Cox.
Yeah.
No, what I'm saying, we keep talking about going wells and everything else. And we have the contract with the city for 2026. I heard 2028 at one point.
No, that's just, that's just the rate. That's just the rate. That's not the contract.
Question is, if you look at Exhibit A here in this thing that Randy put out, there's four spots here, if you look at that, where we have water coming into the township from the city and that. So, the question I have is that we keep talking about wells. Now, we need to, and Randy and I have talked about this on and off, just open discussion that. Leave with the city and see if we can't do the same arrangement as the wastewater and that. See if that's a possibility.
It'd be a nightmare.
And if it's beneficial to even do it.
Talking about an authority?
No.
No.
But.
We bought into the wastewater as a partner in there. We pay, what, 10% or whatever, whatever it is. That same agreement, same type of agreement. See if that's possible and that. We don't know and that.
Joint ownership.
A joint ownership to see if that's possible and that. Just have some discussion that. Now, that was one thing. And the other thing is to talk with them on long-term rates for the township. Work that out because we know the contract is coming up for the, whatever, 2026 and that. Get that taken care of and see what can be, can be done there. Because I look at that, if we can work through that, we really don't need wells.
Right.
Because we have input coming in from that. I don't know what size pipe is coming in on Grove Street at that point in time. If that pipe is big enough to start pushing it out on the 492 all the way out with pumping stations and that. Because when you look at the well system at Morgan Meadows and Mason Bluff, Mason Bluff's only 110 gallons a minute. And that's it. So, that was just a supplemental to whatever was in the other one.
That was part of Morgan Meadows and Phase Two.
So, these are things that need to be, at least throw on the table and either kicked off the table and go in another direction. But things to look at this and that, at that point in time.
It needs to be explored.
In that regard, every time we've had a discussion with the city about the formation of a water authority that has not gone anywhere, it started with joint ownership. And every time, as soon as that was mentioned, it was off the table.
I would never agree to an authority.
No interest whatsoever to joint ownership.
Never.
Unless we want to buy their infrastructure, which I would never recommend.
That's what we would have to do. We'd have to be a partner.
Yeah.
We'd have, just the same way as we are with wastewater.
And the reason they don't want to do that is because they hold all the cards.
Well.
We can always do the well thing again.
Yeah, and they've.
We can always keep that. Maybe we do.
Certainly, you can bring it up. We can bring it up again, but they've never had any interest in talking about joint ownership. And you've got the same people back on the city commission again. And that's what the DEQ stood up here and told you in not quite so many words is, if you've got access to water, get it. Don't rely on another source.
When we started working on the recreation.
And it's, all we're trying to do is to, is to get some direction from the board in terms of what it is you want us to do.
I think that needs to be a consideration before we even answer that question.
That's a question from this body to that body. It's not a staff question.
Right.
Right. That's true.
It needs to be an option.
And if it comes to the point where they don't even talk about it, fine. You just cross it off. We go another direction.
Then we know we have two choices.
At the staff level, when we met with representatives of this body and representatives of that body along with staff, that was not even something that would be talked about.
And that was a long time ago.
Yeah, but it's the same people.
It's the same thing. What happened in a recreation committee when we talked about working together with that? Would they do?
That's an authority. No, that's something different.
No, but did we talk about it? We talked about it.
Line ownership.
Then they start dumping all the horses, dead horses.
But again, you know.
We can walk away.
Yeah, we walked away.
But you've got to plan for their future.
Then what I would.
We walked away.
Then what I would suggest is that the board put together a communication to the city commission proposing that solution. Get it on the table and see where it goes.
I've already asked some of them if they're willing to consider that.
I would suggest you do a formal, a formal request to get it. Because otherwise, you're going to be going months and months and months and months again. You need to do it, just like you did with our Wood Forest land. Where did that go after three years?
Why don't, why don't we ask the manager to draft the questions that need to be asked?
I think that's a political question.
Yeah.
Ask the board for you guys to ask directly to the board.
That's for our board to decide with that one.
At that point in time.
Who on the board is going to ask the question?
We set a meeting up.
It would go from, it would go from supervisor. And I think the question is very easy. Would you entertain a joint ownership proposal?
Yeah.
Between the township and the city for the water infrastructure.
Then we forget it. But it's got to be considered.
It's a real.
And if it comes back that it's not in our best interest, we just move on.
Then you're done. Then you, you have the answer to that question.
Yeah.
The other point is they say yes, then we start looking at all the next three pages down and it still may be a no, not two, but.
Well, but then you have a cost. How are you going to fund it? If they say yes and you want to buy it, how are you going to buy it?
That's what we have to figure out.
So, I mean, it's just.
In the yes or no has to come first.
But I mean, that's a question. That's a, that's a, that's an initial question that, you know, we're trying to make a decision. Would you, would you entertain a request for joint ownership and on what basis?
And it would have been cheaper to go our other way because Phase Two.
Then we have to look at the numbers of that.
I did not mean the manager should ask the question. I just thought that if we had something drafted for the board to say, this is what should be asked when it's asked, then it.
The question is, are you willing to consider a joint cooperative agreement? I'm not saying authority. No way. I'd never propose it and I would never vote for it. And if they say, yeah, let's sit down and talk about it. And then we may spend an hour telling them what we think and they say, absolutely not. We're not going to go this way. Or they could say, well, let's try this or let's do this.
You can use the water treatment facility as an example. Would you consider a similar type of an arrangement that we have with the treatment facility? Solid waste treatment facility, or not solid waste.
See, that's what I mean. We've had this question asked three different ways in just the last two minutes.
No.
Yes, you have.
Not really.
You need, you need to have something on paper and have the board say, this is what we'd like our supervisor to ask. Not have it be questioned after, after it's asked. It should be something that the board as a group decides that this is a question we want you to ask the city.
Okay.
That's all I'm asking for.
What I was going to bring up was exactly that. I didn't know Randy and Ernie had talked because that's what I was going to talk about. My question would be, is the city willing to work with us under the same auspices of the wastewater agreement as they would with water? Because that's what I've already asked two of their board members. They both said absolutely and so did their manager. That's why I was going to bring it here. So, what I need to know is if the two boards want to go that direction and that's why I think it's an option. Until we know it's not an option, it should be considered.
I'm just looking at the dollar cost down the road and that. Is it going to be cheaper to go that way or going our own way?
We don't know.
We don't know that at this point in time.
We could buy 1%, we could buy 10%, we could buy 50%. Who, you have no idea.
Well, quantity is what you, what you'd be looking for.
Yeah. It's similar to selling it to wastewater.
I'd like to consider, I'd like to have you consider it. If you say no, fine. We'll come up with something else. I'd like to consider. I'd like to have you consider. If you say no, fine. We'll come up with something else. We'll go back to our two options.
You know, right now, under your contract, which is attackable, you, you do have unlimited quantity. And that's what you would have to make sure that you preserved going forward would be the unlimited quantities. And that's how you're going to be restricted somehow. But joint ownership could do that.
Now, I asked then, when I knew he wasn't coming, if he had any questions. I didn't say anything about that. And he said, "No." He didn't have any input or questions right now. I asked Randy if he did, and I'm not going to speak for him, but he agrees that the authority, the, I don't want to say authority. The agreement-
Joint ownership.
Joint ownership would be something he'd like to see.
That's an easy question to put forward, Dave.
So, I'm just telling you, if he were here, and I didn't ask him-
All you can do is ask the question.
He said that on his own. I didn't ask him if that's what he was considering.
You're running into a timing issue. You have a meeting next week. Yeah, next week, city meets, not again till the end of the month.
We were talking about a work session, well, with their manager.
I think you just need to make a direct question, just a pointed question to them.
So that they can answer it one way or the other.
Yes.
But they need to, well, I don't know. Do they need to hear our perspective? Do they need to hear our questions? Do we just need to write the question down like John says and ask it and let them fight it out?
I think you just ask them the question. Would you be willing to entertain a joint ownership proposal for the water system?
They've discussed this before.
Pardon?
They've had, they have discussed this before, you know?
Not this board.
Not, not, not us, them.
Yeah, but not their current board.
If that's, if that's a serious option that the board wants to consider, just ask them the question.
I think it's one option you have to at least put on the table and either move forward on or, or put it to the side and go on to the next one.
If, if you're looking at something similar to what the wastewater is, it wouldn't be the whole system. It'd be just the treatment.
What you would be talking about probably is to own, to own that portion of the water system that's required to serve the township, which would be the infrastructure that's in the ground and a portion of the treatment plant.
That's exactly why I think it needs to be crafted, agreed to, and presented. We don't have to have a joint meeting because there'd be a lot of abidaba go on there.
But there are too many different ways that can go. If they're not amenable to even the concept, then there's no point in trying to figure out what all the other options would be.
I think basically what you've got, what you've got is your, your contract that's in place defines what the township is responsible for. So, I mean, that's what you would be looking to purchase, would be to acquire that portion of the system necessary to serve the township, which is, you know, the mains and that that are, that are coming into the township to the four points that Ernie was talking about, that are on the map that depicts those are the access points coming into the township that are metered, basically. And then that percentage or portion of the treatment plant that acquires the water from the lake trees and distributes it, that portion of it necessary to serve the township, based upon volume.
So Kirk, does the plant?
Yes.
Yeah, we don't know in any of their system.
Okay. Yes, Dave?
That whole issue aside, that's one that's got to be resolved. But if you had unlimited water from the city, does that allow for expansion, the direction that everything's saying it should go?
It would qualify or satisfy the DEQ requirement?
The only thing that it would negate would be the wells. We would have to do everything else. It'd be the rest of it. We'd have to have the pumping stations and all that and the tank. We would probably have to have a pressure tank at that point as well.
So-
And to expand, we still need to expand the infrastructure. We don't want the city owning our infrastructure.
No, no.
No. So, what does it actually change?
Well, it would be, if, if what you're saying is, is if we just bought the capacity from the city as opposed to putting wells in, we would have to expand our system. And Kirk can give you a better picture than I am, but just offhand, we would have to expand the system to have a pumping station, an appropriately sized pumping station at the Chapel Ridge tank. If we're going west, at the Chapel Ridge tank to be able to serve the roughly seven miles between there and Nagani Township. And whatever, whether Lake Enchantment Road or whatever decided that they wanted to connect, they would be on.
So, so I'm suggesting that the only difference would be-
The wells.
Infrastructure would be the same as the difference between the walls versus pumping stations.
Correct. That's, that's what, what I can see.
I suspect it's not a significant number.
We, we have to have the-
The last time we were talking about pumping station from Chapel Ridge up to Mason's Bluff was in the, geez, it was like $500,000, wasn't it?
But that was just to get to Mason's Bluff. That was the rest of the way out.
So-
No, that, the Mason's Bluff pumping station was only to pump to the new tank.
I understand that. I understand that. But that alone, that size setup was-
But if we don't have the wells?
Several hundred thousand dollars. So, if you don't have the wells, I understand that. If you don't have the wells, you've got to pump it farther. Requires a whole different-
Well, plus you'd have to pump it 24/7.
Yeah, I understand that. So, the only difference you're looking at is you're still looking at a watered-down version of phase two. You're just going to take the well fields off the equation and you're going to put pumping stations in, in place of it. So, are you really talking that much of a difference?
Well, you'd take, be taking two wells away and what, what the production wells, what ballpark?
For the- What are we taking away?
If, if, if Mason, if we went forward with phase two, what would it cost us to put the two production, two wells into production? Is it two wells or three wells we had to have there?
Morgan Meadows is three wells.
Three wells, all right. So, so for the three wells, what Dave was trying to do is equate that if we forget phase two and we just buy more water from the city and put the infrastructure in place to get it to 492 in those areas that we would develop, without the wells, what would, would, what would the impact of that be on the project?
Which boils down to the cost of the wells.
In essence, cost of the wells versus the cost of the expanded pumping stations.
Five million or whatever that number was.
Well, it was, yeah, it was between, in 2009, it was 4.8, and then I think they hit it up to 5.5 or something like that. That's the whole system. That's not just the cost of the wells. So, it would be the cost of the three production wells, which we don't have production wells there now. They're test wells. So, they'd have to be converted to production wells.
So, Kirk, do you have any kind of a ballpark as to what it is to develop that Morgan Meadows into production wells, three of them? I mean, it's got to be in that 2004 estimate, right?
It'd be probably six million now, then.
No, not the whole project.
Nope, nope.
Just the wells.
Not the whole project.
Oh, just the-.
Where are the wells?
But you also have the long-term cost for maintaining those wells.
Yeah. And you still need the infrastructure to use them. How much different is that from the six million?
The difference is, is that if you did an agreement with the city comparable to the sewer project, you still need to put in the infrastructure if you're going to expand. So, the infrastructure is infrastructure.
Right.
Doesn't matter if you're doing it for the city water, if you're doing it for the wells, it's the same price. The only difference you've got is the difference between developing three production wells versus putting in pumping stations to get the water to where we want it. If it's city water, you've got to put in pumping stations, correct? If it's wells, it's the cost of developing the wells.
Right.
So, that's the only difference you're talking about. And I think, don't think you're talking that much money difference.
All right. This is, according to this estimate from 2009, at that time, the wells and the well house were 1.25 million.
So, you're going to increase that by 40%? 30%?
Total price, 1.3. 1.3 million was the total price of that with the installation. So, 1.3 million for the Morgan Meadows well field and well house.
So, if you increase that by 30%, that's going to represent one of the six million.
That was roughly, was roughly a third.
So, it's going to be just shy of $2 million.
Something like that.
To do the, the three production wells. If I remember your conversation from a couple of years ago, the cost of putting in the pumping stations just to service Mason's Bluff was, was half a million dollars. So, to put in pumping stations with the capability of supplying that entire infrastructure all the way out to the proposed tank is, got to be close to $2 million.
Pretty much a wash.
So, I'm suggesting that it doesn't matter if you're getting city water or if you're putting in production wells, the cost of developing that out there is going to be about the same.
Cost, yeah.
Right.
And, and again, it gets back to what the question that I had to the board before is, are you comfortable with remaining with a sole source provider? Or do you, going forward, want to have the security of providing your own water? That's the basic question the board needs to answer, because you have a perpetual contract right now with the city. Nobody knows what goes forward with that.
I don't think you have to, you have to forecast it out very far to know that if it's a comparable cost to develop Morgan Meadows and put in the infrastructure, if it's comparable to just burning the infrastructure and use the water from the city, if those two costs are comparable, the only thing you're changing the equation with is what's it cost to buy 10% or 20% or 30% of their treatment plant? It's just more cost.
Right.
So, getting the city water to buy into that and getting an unlimited supply and being able to pump that all the way out so that we can develop 492 is actually going to cost us more if we're using city water and substantially more.
Because you'll be on the hook for future improvements.
Right. As opposed to developing phase two that is, as it stands today.
Okay, the other question is, the capacity of those wells, what's the future capacity of the water in those wells?
Well, that's been all answered before. It's in the, it's in all the StanTech reports that are on that.
On StanTech, I went through the other one, and there was questions there that they were looking at too.
Yeah, it was DEQ also verified the, the pump rate.
Well, actually, they're on standby right now. If you have questions, the StanTech, we can call them up.
Well, I think it's all in those two reports. I mean, they have a forecast, and they know what you can affect. So, my whole point of that whole discussion was, is I don't think it matters if the city wants to sell you a portion of their treatment plant or not. If the city sells this portion of the treatment plant and we continue the expansion that we think needs to happen out of 492, it's actually going to get more expensive than if we just put in the well fields and did it ourselves.
In the long run.
So, what you're saying is, in order to, if it's $6 million to do phase two and finish that, it's going to cost us $6 million to go to the city? And if, I don't know what 10% it would be. I have no idea.
All I'm saying is, out of the $6 million to do phase two, $2 million of dollars, $2 million of that is going to be to develop the well field. Yep, okay? So, that means the infrastructure improvements are $4 million. So, the infrastructure improvements are going to stay $4 million. It doesn't matter what direction the water is flowing. It's going to stay $4 million. What's going to change is, we can take $2 million that we're going to spell, spend on well field development, and we're going to put it into pressure pumps to get the water from the city to where we want it. But we're still, at that point, we've still spent $6 million. We're now relying on the city for more water instead of just having our own. I think you should still ask the question from the city to see if there's any interest. I think what you're adding to the equation, if you buy the water from the city, is you're, you're adding whatever it's going to cost to buy a percentage of their treatment plant. That's going to be an additional cost to the city option.
Yeah, there'd be that initial, right?
You know, there's going to be a whole bunch of money involved there. I've never seen the city give anything away yet. And the other problem I've got is, we don't, we're not in a position to negotiate anything, because we don't have any other options. If we don't move forward-
We've got a $6 million option.
Sure we do.
Yeah.
But it's not a realistic option, because we don't have day set to do anything. We don't have a plan in front of us. We have a plan that needs updating. But we don't have a capital improvements program that's going to say by this day, we're going to have phase two of the water project done, unless city, you'd like to negotiate with us to work hand in hand so that we don't have to spend that money. We're not in a position to negotiate anything.
Well, I disagree. We've got an option. We know we can do this.
We know we can.
Yeah.
Like, here's some-.
But we don't have an option because there's not a plan out there. The city knows there's not a plan out there.
There is, that's a valid plan. It hasn't been refined.
I think what David's saying is, is that if you've said yes today, we're going to build phase two, it's going to be three to five years before it's operational.
Right.
And I think five's the closer option.
Probably is.
By the time you get your finances and everything else done, it's going to be five years out before you can flip the switch.
So, you really don't have a bargaining chip to say, "All right, if you don't do this now, five years from now, we're going to have a well field."
Well, we don't need to worry about, that's the whole reason for the discussion before the discount disappears. I'm not, and I'm not saying that this is the end-all answer. I'm saying it's an option that nobody's considered discussing.
I think, I think you need to ask the question, just to get a response.
Yeah. That's all I'm saying, is it's, it's number C on the list of options.
But I think losing the 59 cents a gallon, or a thousand gallon is, is really irrelevant.
It's not the big question.
It's not going to affect anybody's water rates significantly.
No. Well, Randy's been saying for years that it is.
But what's going to affect their water rates is-
How much we spend.
How much we spend in debt service fees. How much is that going to add to it? And you've got to get it out of the, this much for debt service fees and this much for water rates. This is what my bill's going to look like one way, and this is what it's going to look like the other way. And there's no reason we can't forecast a resident's water bills today when the first debt service fee drops off and when the next one drops off. Those water rates should be changing, unless you're doing something else with the money, unless you're going to put it into contingency. The water rate should change. The, the bill should change.
I think it wouldn't necessarily go down though, because the cost of doing business-
If they go away, the bill will go down.
That's exactly what we need to forecast out so we can see that. And there's no reason you can't forecast that out. And you got the-
Fine with me.
You can do the same forecast if you develop phase two. You can forecast what it's going to cost you, when it's going to cost you, and what the resident's water bill is going to look like as we face, as we move along, without phase two or with phase two.
Well, there was a number, and that's what Randy mentioned the last time we talked about this, as to what the debt would be on this project. And by eliminating three debts, I think, two or three debts that we already have on the books would pretty much wash that. And that's why he suggested waiting till whatever year that was.
He wanted to go five years out.
Five or whatever.
I don't disagree with that. What I disagree with is not having a solid plan on when that's going to happen and exactly what's going to happen.
I thought that was the purpose of having this meeting.
Yeah, well, it was, yeah. But I don't, it's not a matter of setting a date. I don't think that has to happen. Randy's been saying for how many years, what do you want to do?
Well, a timeline or something, is the kind of idea.
Yeah. That's the thing we need to try to figure out. That's why we're here. And that's why throughout option three, as part of that decision, if you don't want to do that, that's fine. If you don't want to do the well project, that's fine. We'll just stop.
And all I'm suggesting is that before I could make a decision one way or the other, I need to know what some guy in, in Trowbridge Water Bill's going to look like over the next 10 years. If one happens, and with the other one happens, what's this going to look like?
Well, you know what it's going to look like with this, right?
Well, it's hard to say, because by the time we throw in debt service fees and say that's how much it's going to change, the average guy can't follow that along and say what his bill's going to look like.
I guess I got to ask the question. What difference does it make what the bill is 10 years from now? The question, the question you're asking is, or the question you're, you're pondering is, and I know there's laughter coming from the, the audience, but the question you're asking is, what does this community want to ensure for the future with regard to water? Not what is it going to cost? What do you want to do? Do you want to stay with the city and continue to buy from the city? Do you want to have your own water resources, or do you want a combination of the two? Once you make that decision, the cost is going to be whatever the cost is.
Well, one of the bigger things you need to decide with is, do you want to expand out 492 or don't you?
Well, with that, that's part of that question. If you don't want to expand out 492, then you don't have to do anything. You're done.
We know we're going to have a joint system. That doesn't answer the question.
If you're anticipating the township is going to continue to develop, your target, that 25-year maximum build-out is going to expand every year. It's going to get bigger every year in terms of the quantity you're going to need to have. That's what we're trying to get an answer to. What is it that you want to do for the community? Do you want to ensure relative independence or security for water, or do you want to continue to purchase water? It's, I mean, it's not, it's not really any different than that. The cost is going to be what the cost is. You can't control the cost, regardless of what your decision is. You won't control the cost. Some other consulting company, every three years, is going to decide what your water rate is.
Oh, and if, and if I'm the resident that's deciding whether I want to move forward with this or not, I want to know what my bill's going to look like when you get it done versus what it's going to look like today and what it's going to look like if you never do it.
But then, like, that's what goes back to whether we do the city or not. Even if it's a break even, it doesn't matter what it costs. It doesn't matter. It's, there's going to be an increase either way.
Like gasoline. You pay what it costs to have gasoline. I mean, you don't control that cost.
There's, there's going to be a cost. My bill's going to look like, in 2025, my water bill is going to look like this if we don't do phase two, and it's going to look like that if we do do phase two.
It'd be pretty hard to do that here. How much is gas?
They may. It'd be nice to know that.
I mean, just, just, actually, every time we get, we have one of these projects, we, we do that, you know, or a consultant does that. He tells you exactly what it's going to cost. You know, you got a user charge and you got a debt service. And the last time we did that was for the, okay, in conjunction with the road project. Remember that one?
Bond council, so it was-
That's exactly what we did.
Yeah.
Okay, when we, when we did the road project, we could tell them exactly what their tax bill was going to look like.
We did the same thing for the water.
Yeah, because we're going on a millage. I mean, you can, you can do that if you want to fund this by a millage. You can tell them exactly what it's going to be. If you're going to do it with a millage like you did with the, with the road project. But when you're dealing with a construction project, like, you can't predict what the cost is ultimately going to be. We saw that with the first phase. It's just, you know, the, the cost is what the cost is. The question is, what do you want to provide, you know?
And how do we want to do it? Do we want to totally be independent? Do we want to have a joint system, or do we want to rely on our wells?
And how much do you want to pay from the, water from Nagani, because they have excess pumping supply?
I, I think if you approach it from the cost is what the cost is, that there's not a resident out there that's going to go along with the project.
That's the, what we're trying to get down to is what direction do we want to go? You would ask for financial information to help you decide that. You got it. It's going to cost 6 million if we continue to use our well system and expand going to the west. We don't know what it would cost if we include the city. If they come to us and say, 10% is going to cost you 7 million, this is probably the better way to go. So, until we have some kind of something to base this against, then our two choices are, we don't do anything or we do it. So, we've got to narrow it down.
I think the only thing you can legitimately say to the residents right now is, if we go forward to build this project, the projection right now is it's going to cost you between 10, 20, and 14, 52 a month.
And retirement.
Period.
Right.
As of right now.
Based on 3,905 residents in the business community as it is today.
Yep.
As of right today.
So, we know that. If we don't do anything, it's not going to cost them that, other than the incremental increases for wages and whatever infrastructure improvements and his, and the CIP with the basic stuff we have to do. That's it.
Has it, if you're trying to project what your rate's going to be in 10 years or five years or whatever?
Too many variables.
Really control a lot of it. We don't know what's going to happen. Really control a lot of it. We don't know what's going to happen with electric power. We don't know what's going to happen with a lot of stuff.
What we can project is the decrease of debt retirement coming up in two years and three years down the road.
Yeah, that's why he based his thoughts.
Those are going to be going off.
Those are, there's two are going off, and that.
That's what I said, we've already done that.
But I think we have to take the option and ask the question. And then, once you find that, then you move forward, and that, you just-
You have to eliminate the ones that aren't going to work when you know what all your options are. If you've got 10 options, you can't just say, which one do I want to do? And you can't just look at the financials. You have to figure out what's not going to work, and for whatever reasons. Narrow it down. It's just like hiring somebody.
You're down to three options.
Yeah. Well, you were, you were trying to base it on two. And I was saying that there's a third option. And I think they should all be explored. If somebody else has got another option, we can look at that before we decide what we want to do. But we know what this is now. That's what you would ask for.
Well, let me clarify. I can go through here and figure out what my water bill, what my water bill is going to look like.
Right.
But you are never going to sell that to the residents based on the information that's in that package. Because they're going to read that, and they're going to walk away scratching their head and wondering, what are you trying to do to me now? Because you can't go through that and figure out what your water bill's going to look like.
Of course not, not the way it is. We just told you it's going to be between $10 and $14 more because of the debt. That's what it's going to be, that's what it's going to cost more, as of right now, tomorrow.
If this is done tomorrow, my water bill's going to be-
$10 and, or 14, whatever that number is.
More per month.
Yes. Right? Yes?
Yeah, based on those figures.
That's what it's going to be. We, this is a known now. It's pretty close. We have a range. If we don't do anything, it's not going to go up. So there's two options.
No, if you don't do anything, it's actually going to go down.
Not necessarily.
In two years, it's going to go down.
That retirements will go up.
Yeah, that will happen.
That'll cause my water bill to go down, right?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily.
And I think another question is-
So many other factors.
Someone's going to ask a question, why are we even considering going up 492? Why are we putting all those dollars there? How can we justify it?
Because that's what, where the water is.
Where the water is.
That's where the water is, and that's what the problem with the growth is.
The water's there, but why do we need the water?
Well, because we-
It's our growth pattern.
Yes, there is a growth necessity that we're responsible for.
We don't know, we're assuming it's going to grow that way. We don't have any idea.
They call that planning. The only reason you're looking at a water source is because you've had an unreliable provider. That's the only reason you're looking at it. So if, if that's okay, you don't have to do anything. You roll the dice. You hope that the same people don't get into office next door and come back after you again. Simple as that. I mean, it's, it's not a complicated question.
So what you're saying is, we're not concerned with the development out there, we're only concerned with the water availability to those who already have it?
The development is going to, the development's going to occur. People will sink private wells wherever they can. I mean, that, that's going to happen. You know, we see it. We see it happening all over the place. The question is, do you want to drive how that gets done? Do you want to drive subdivision development, or do you want to drive individual houses on 20 and 40 acres? That's, that's part of the question. But the bottom-line question is, how are you going to address your water security going forward? Are you comfortable with your current arrangement? You're comfortable with your current arrangement, which has been talked about before? Stay with it. We'll quit working on Phase Two. We'll throw that shit away. We'll get rid of it, be done with it. Don't spend another dime on it.
And then we focus all of our efforts on-
You're concerned about what might happen with your current water provider going forward in the future, and you want some security, you need to do Phase Two. It's just that easy. It's that simple. And the cost is going to be what the cost is for your water independence and for your ability to continue to develop.
It's not going to offer us-
Or to continue to survive, serve your residents.
It's not going to offer us any more security to put 492 in.
Well, that will, because it'll give you water. It'll give you water you don't currently have.
It's not going to give us any more security. It's going to help.
Well, it'll give you water security because you won't have to rely on the city. You can operate without the city.
No, we can't.
Sure you could.
Not exclusively.
Much less. Same as what-
Less, but not exclusively.
Well, we have a joint. They can't operate without us. We have a joint water system.
So it's just a matter of how much we want to keep that.
Exactly.
So if it's just because you want to increase development, that's kind of a-
It's not what I was saying. What I was saying is, if you're comfortable with your current arrangement for your water resources to the township, you have a contract.
I would find record to say that I'm not comfortable with that.
If you're not comfortable with the contract going forward, then you have to have another source for water. That's Mason's Bluff, because it's the only place you've got that produces the amount of water that you need to have. And people on Mason's Bluff, can they put a well in there?
Morgan Meadows.
They have a well. The only one they can get. One. Okay, how many, can every one of those 30-some houses put a well in and get water?
No.
Well, as of today, they can put wells in, they won't necessarily get water.
Exactly. I'm just saying, there's no water there for them. As it sits right now, the plan at Mason's Bluff is for a handful of houses around the outside of that bowl of water. And they will only have water in those, in their, in their draw as long as the main well doesn't draw the water down any further, which is the one big house that's there now. What was our commitment when they put that subdivision in? Did we make any commitments that we supply water?
That, that's a whole nother.
Well, they were part of, they were part of our submittal. We were doing Phase Two, and they were going to tie into Phase Two.
Well, our commitment was they could connect to-
Phase Two.
To Morgan Meadows. And in exchange, we got an extra well.
Right.
Add two Morgan Meadows.
Bernie, go ahead.
What's our next step as we move forward now?
Well, we need to chew on this, for sure.
Well, I think you, as a group, need to decide, number one, are you going to send a letter to the city asking about joint ownership? And then, number two, depending on what the answer to that question is, what do you do? Do you stay with the current arrangement you have under the contract, and we forget about going any more money on Phase Two? Or do you want to continue to pursue Phase Two? That's, that's what we need an answer to. Because if we're going to continue to go on Phase Two, Kirk and I both need to know that for budget for 2019.
We can't make any motions, so.
I would suggest that, at our board meeting coming up, that this comes up and that. Also make a suggestion that we put a timeframe on it. If we don't get anything back from them, because we, we have a timeframe that we have to do something with that, too, so. We have to move forward, and they can make a decision. If they want to drag it out, well, fine, we'll go in another direction that, too, so.
Because if you decide you want to go forward, continue going forward with Phase Two, we're going to have to submit to the DEQ again to keep, keep it viable, which means we're going to have to-
What's the timeframe on that?
When would we have to submit to DEQ to update the plan?
Well, again, we need to know from you guys, when do you want it?
Well, that's what they're asking, you know.
Well, a minimum would be like, if we did it today, like 18 months, maybe?
So we'd have to start it, we would have to start it in early 19, start that process.
At least a year, and then could just do the paperwork. All right, let's just chew on this, and we're going to put it on the next agenda and see what's different. We've got two more inputs maybe that we can get. I've told them both, they really need to watch this show, so they can be up to speed where we are.
There's been a suggestion for a draft. Do you want us, Kirk and I, to put a draft together for you to consider?
Might be a good idea.
That's fine. Draft isn't going to hurt. Want to do it for Tuesday?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll put it together and send it out to you to, by, by, by Thursday. Now, see, this is Tuesday. By Thursday, we'll get you a draft out electronically for you to take a look at.
We'll have the discussion on the end of that.
Well, we'll have it out to you tomorrow, because you have to have it for the packet by Thursday, if you decide to put it on. So we'll have it to you by the end of the day tomorrow.
Okay, let me continue discussion of DWRF2 water project. Okay?
We have a limit on the discussion during the board meeting?
Yeah, that's why we did this. Well, that's why I want them to watch the show, too, so.
I don't think it should be much of a discussion.
No.
Just move forward on that one item, and if you don't get anything back, then you take the next one.
Okay. All right, 4:05.
We have public comments.
Oh, sorry, guys.
I'd like to see a photo on, on the-
Absolutely. Come on up, then, so we can hear you. My apologies. We don't normally have anybody in here for our work sessions.
Dan Pompo, 2422 Cherry Street. I am in the Cox district. I am getting city water as well as the rest of the Cox district. And from the sounds of it, it doesn't matter whether you put in Phase Two or not, Cox district is still going to be getting city water. The question in 2026 would be a 59 cent increase per thousand gallons, because that's what the rate was in, in the trial, which means that I would pay approximately a dollar, since I'm an average household, would be 3,000 gallons, a dollar eighty more a month. Compared to putting into your DWRF2 of, and you said $10, but actually range anywhere from $10 to $14, and that's just an estimate, because nobody really knows what that's going to be, increasing my water bill rate to $14 more a month for the next 25 years, compared to my $1.50 I'm going to get for pay, for increasing my water from the city. You're, you're putting a lot of ideas that you might be extending out 492. There's people on 492 that already have wells. There's residents on 492 that have wells. There's, there's a convent that has wells. If you take, and, and something that was missing, I didn't notice it on the things that was given out, was the DEQ's thing of the aquifers, of what's affected by this well. You have the aquifer for Morgan Meadows. You have the aquifer for Nagani Township, and you have the aquifer for all those people that have a well on 492 right now. What are you going to do to that aquifer? Now, the fact that, that the Cox district is a very large district, the fact that we're not going to get any water out of that, so I'm going to be paying $15 more, $14, $15 more a month for nothing that's going to be of any effect to me. The only person that's going to be able to actually, and I think when we get right down to it, we're basically talking Mason's Bluff. I'm sorry, but that's, seems to be the main, because that's the only thing that's out there that's developed right now, is Mason's Bluff. Mason's Bluff is a standalone area. You can get water to Mason's Bluff by installing a pumping station and taking it off of the Chapel Ridge tank. But since that's a standalone area, why isn't that a special assessment for Mason's Bluff? Why should the rest of the township pay for water for Mason's Bluff? These are all questions that, you know, that need to be answered. I, I'm, I'm sorry, but, you know, the, the question was, while we're concerned about water rates, what your water bill's going to look like. The fact that in two years, my water bill is, the rates are going to go down because of debt retirement being paid, but that's okay, we'll bring it back up again, just so we didn't really have to pay more money. How about we pay less money for my water bill? Making it an even deal, just because it's, you want to put something in 492 that you have absolutely no idea if it's even going to be developed, you can project all you want. But if people can put their own wells in out in 492, why aren't more people doing it? If you had a well out in 492, would you pay our water rates compared to putting your own well in? I don't think so. So they're not going to want to do it. And again, if Mason's Bluff wants it, fine. Special assessment, Mason's Bluff. Let them pay for it. Just the developer, why should I pay for Mason's Bluff water? That's all I can say.
Thanks, Dan.
Willie Trusker, 122 Woodridge. Put it on the ballot either August or November, and whatever the people want, let them pay for it. That'd be the right way to do it. Put it on the ballot.
Thank you. Okay. Any board member comment? Amen. Okay, now I can hit the gavel, John. 4:10. Thank you.